All right, we're gonna go ahead and call to order the Oakdale City Council meeting, November 28th, 2023. Sarah, will you take the roll?
Councilmember here.
Here.
Councilmember Ingridson.
Here.
Councilmember Morecambe.
Here.
Councilmember Willenbring.
Here.
Mayor Zabel.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and the two great republics where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Councilmembers, we have a slightly amended version in front of us. Can I get a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is approved. Next up, we have approval of the minutes. Two sets in front of us tonight. First up, minutes from our workshop on November 14th. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? Look for a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. Next up, we have regular meeting minutes from November 14th, 2023. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? I'll look for motion.
So moved.
No, regular meeting.
Yeah.
We did workshop.
Yeah, workshop, regular meeting.
Are you envisioning into the future?
I swear I've said, just go ahead, just go right ahead.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the regular meeting minutes from November 14th are approved. Next up, we have a couple of public hearings in front of us tonight. First up is support of an application for the Minnesota Investment Fund Program. Looks like we have a staff presentation from Community Development Director Gidzalov. Andy, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, item before you is a support for an application to the Minnesota Investment Fund Program, MIF for short. The application is to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, DED, and this application is for Pace Analytical and Oakdale Business to expand within Oakdale. The MIF is a program that is run at by DED, but as part of the program, cities partner with the business to submit, to submit the application to DED for assistance. The purpose of this request for the MIF funds is to allow for an expansion, approximately 7,864 square feet of office space within Oakdale. Pace will be investing in this project, a total of $3.6 million over three years, which includes machinery and equipment, building renovations, and the property, and the property lease. For, for the MIF loan where they're seeking state assistance, it would be for $450,000. They estimate that the improvements would create 59 new jobs in Oakdale with an average rate wage of $43.36 per hour. The loan would be through DED. It would be set up as a forgivable loan. Loan forgiveness would occur after a set amount of time if all job and wage goals are, are met. There is another request on, later on the agenda, for Job Creation Fund through, through DED that, that will request another $5,000,000, but that would be, that'll be taken under a separate action. There is not a public hearing required for that. For the MIF application, there is a public hearing required and a resolution of support is, is needed from City Council. Couple other points. Council has, or Oakdale Business has utilized this, this program in the past, optimized social media back in 2017, and they had recently had completed their grant obligations for that one as well. Financial considerations, based on the analysis by Baker Tilly, the city's financial advisor, no adverse findings or concerns regarding, but not limited to tax liens, judgments, court actions, and filings with the state, federal, and other regulatory agencies were identified. There is more, a more detailed business credit check review that was prepared by Baker Tilly and Michaela Hoyt, who was the author of that document, is here as well tonight. If there's any questions from Council. I will also note that Representative from Pace, Marty Shelton, is also here in the audience tonight, is the Vice, Vice President. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions. And again, a public hearing is also required for this item.
Thank you, Andy. Councilmembers, any questions for Andy right off the bat? While we're at it, how about questions for Baker Tilly? Michaela? None? How about any questions for Pace?
No.
All right, we're checking them all off the box.
I was gonna say, just to thank you for Pace for expanding here in Oakdale. Appreciate it.
So at this time, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. This is an opportunity for anybody in the public to step up to the podium, share any thoughts on this specific agenda item. What?
Oh, no. Yeah, we have someone here for the open forum.
Got it, all right.
Yeah, that's kinda telling her to hold tight.
But for now, public hearing on this specific agenda item. If anybody would like to step up, please feel free to do so. All we ask is that you state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comments. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back up front for Council consideration. Councilmembers, any final questions or comments? All right, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2023-118, supporting a Minnesota Investment Fund application in connection with Pace Analytical Life Sciences, LLC.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that resolution is approved. Can I have a second motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the grant contract and amendments necessary to implement the project on behalf of the city of Oakdale.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is approved as, as well. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Next up, we have approval of a massage therapist license, and premise license. Is there a staff presentation?
I can do it.
Ms. Volkers.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, this is, a public hearing is required for approval of this massage therapist and premise license to Tamara Baker at Golden Massage, or Golden Coast Massage. Staff is recommending approval of this license and premise, therapist license and premise, and they, we invite you to open the public hearing and receive comments, close out public hearing, and consider approving.
Great. Councilmembers, any questions for Chris? All right, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing on the topic of approval of a new massage and therapist, massage therapist and premise license at 1379 Geneva Avenue North. Seeing no one, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back up. Councilmembers, final questions? Anybody? All right, I'll look for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a new massage therapist and premise license to Tamara Baker at Golden Coast Massage LLC, located at 1397 Geneva Avenue North.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that license is, or those licenses are approved. Next up is open forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, share whatever is on your mind. Please feel free. House rules ask people to kindly keep comments to three minutes or so, but we're, we're flexible on that, but please feel free. Welcome.
Super awesome. My name is Melissa Brant, and I live at 392 Grafton Avenue North. And I've been having, I've lived there for three years now, and I sold my house not too far from my house now, in Maplewood. And I didn't really think much about having a parking lot in my backyard. So I have video, I mean, I've been calling police, I've been contacting people, especially after tonight, I went and drove. There is nothing good happening on my side of the parking lot. I'm asking for some lights because it's shady. I've seen too many things. I'm an east side girl. I've been an east sider, you know what I mean? I've been around the block. I know what's going on, and I don't want it. It's a safety issue for me. And the police have been helpful, but we have no defined rules. So, high school kids will park there. That's not okay. That's not part of city code. When it comes to loitering in that parking lot, sometimes it's respected by the police and other times it's pushed away. And that's also a safety issue when there's a vehicle that has like all of its personal belongings underneath a tarp, and they're sleeping there for eight hours, and a Saturday, police officer says, it's a parking lot. They can park there. Because I live on the backside, nothing good is happening there. There is so much other parking, and I need a defined rule. Who's allowed to park there? I need to know, because, you know, people will just back in, they've set up hammocks, and they're facing my backyard. I get it, it's a park. But if you're doing park stuff, you're gonna be down by the park. That parking lot is never full. It's only bad things going on. So I need, like I said, a definite answer on the rules. Can you just park there? Can you just hang out there? Can you just be looking at me in my backyard? And you're not in the park, you're just parking there. So, and again, for evening times, safety and security, I think there needs to be a light put up. And the police have been amazing in the evening. They do come through, and they do respond, and they've told me, you know, I don't, I just don't wanna be that girl. I don't wanna be calling you. You're not police park rangers. I get it. You have bigger, better things to do in your life. You're cops. And I'm sorry. But they're like, don't, don't, don't worry about it. We hit a lot of good things out of there, and I see a lot of things. And so I'm just asking, what do I do? Who do I turn to? The parking lot is the biggest thing right now. I have got other neighbor issues with trailers and stupid things, because, I mean, I ended up spending like $310,000 on a very small home with a very big piece of property, and I just feel like I shouldn't have to live in the ghetto. And that's kinda how I feel I'm living right now. And $310,000 is a lot of money.
Thank you.
So, I just need some help.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make comments during open forum? Seeing none, we're gonna keep things moving, go on to consensus motions. In front of us tonight, we have A through F. Councilmembers, are there any individual ones you'd like to pull for consideration? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions A through F as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A through F are presented. Next is an opportunity to check in with our advisory boards and commissions. EDC did not meet. Onto me, Liaison for the Environmental Management Commission. They met last week, right before Thanksgiving. What did they talk about? They, they're working on their 2024 work plan, and they also had a very interesting presentation from the Washington County Conservation District, the Watershed District, about different projects that have been going on in Oakdale and throughout the county, also highlighting a number of grant opportunities that are available to our residents to do things like plant native plants in their yard, explore rain gardens. Of course, watershed district staff are there to help throughout the entire process, so those are good opportunities for our residents to look into. Some of the grants can range from 50 to 100% of the cost. I think some grants are even up to $15,000. There's grants for private residents, businesses, nonprofits. There's a lot of opportunity. Oakdale is actually covered by three different watershed districts, so you may have to look to see which one your property falls within, but they all have different grant opportunities. So that was kind of a cool thing that the EMC reviewed. Perks, their, their meeting was canceled, so no other commission meetings during the, the month of November. Next up, award to bid, nothing tonight, so we will move on to staff reports. We have quite a few tonight from Community Development, so let's welcome our city planner, Luke McClanahan, to walk us through them. Welcome, Luke.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this first one, Shoreland Ordinance, I don't have a PowerPoint, but I look for the next one. Get that queued up here. So if you recall that earlier this year, we, city staff brought to the city council at a workshop, an update on, on the Shoreland Ordinance, and we finally have the, the draft, or the final ordinance for presentation for your consideration this evening. So you recall that city staff has been working with the Minnesota DNR Department of Natural Resources since late 2022 on the, in order to develop a new shoreline regulation, a set of regulations for the city. And unless a city has adopted its own regulations, state law must be followed, which contains very strict standards for development and redevelopment. Shoreland is defined as land that is located within 1,000 feet of the public water bodies, or the, the ordinary high water level of those lakes. And this is commonly the transition line between what is predominantly aquatic to land-based natural vegetation. And in Oakdale, there are three public water bodies, and they are Tanner's Lake, Mud Lake, and Armstrong South Portion Lake. So adopting the Shoreland Ordinance would essentially accomplish several things. And the first thing is to ensure that the city is in compliance with state law. The second one is to help protect the Shoreland and the environmentally sensitive features that are in those areas. And then number three is enable development to occur in a reasonable manner. Particularly, this is focused on the west side of Tanner's Lake, where there are some vacant parcels. The city owns property there. And through the, the state law, or following the, the state law that's in effect right now, it makes it very difficult to facilitate development there. So by negotiating with the DNR and developing the ordinance, Shoreland Ordinance, there, there's some flexibility that's built into our regulations. Mainly, this is for setback requirements, so reducing those, those setback requirements, enabling, enabling redevelopment to occur, and again, particularly at the Tanner's Lake site. Additionally, the ordinance would mainly affect properties that abut those lakes. However, there, there would be a handful of what we call legal non-conforming properties, or properties that would be affected by these, but they, they can continue to be used as such, but there might be some limitations on being able to expand further. So the DNR issued conditional approval of the ordinance that's in your packet. That occurred on October 23rd. The Planning Commission heard the request for this ordinance on November 2nd. They held a public hearing, the required public hearing, and they also recommended approval, and staff is recommending approval of this ordinance. Assuming that the council approves it, the next step would be to resubmit the ordinance to the DNR for final approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any questions for Luke? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 912, amending the City of Oakdale Code of Ordinances, Chapter 25, to include Article 26, Shoreland Overlay Zoning District.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that ordinance is approved. Can I have another motion?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2023-117, authorizing publication of ordinance number 912 by title and summary.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And title and summary is approved. Next up, we have a staff presentation on Marley's Center for Early Education. Luke?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So we might be able to bring this up here on the screen in a moment. The location of this site is 1470 Helmo Avenue. So it's on the west side of Helmo, just south of its intersection with 15th Street. It's adjacent to North Star Mini Storage and a couple multi-tenant commercial buildings. The purpose of this request is to establish an early education center. So in terms of age ranges, you might be wondering, these are children, daycare, preschool age. The zoning for this site is a PUD, Planned Unit Development, which allows the proposed use. Some details on this, this education center, it would serve approximately 162 children, and it would also employ approximately 23 full-time workers. The property is a 1.2 acre vacant site. It's surrounded by other commercial uses, as mentioned, including a vacant parcel to the north. The access for the site would be a, a new shared access between this parcel and the, the vacant parcel to the north. There is, I just wanna know, a northbound turn lane on Helmo Avenue that would serve the site. So here's a, a look at the site plan. The Helmo Avenue, as you can see, is on the right-hand side and just working our way from right to left. You'll see the parking area there paralleling Helmo Avenue, and then there's outdoor play area, a courtyard, and then the building itself is outlined in red. The building is approximately 12,000 square feet. The parking area, as required by the city zoning requirements, they wouldn't, the developer would need to provide 60 parking spaces. However, the developer is requesting a PUD amendment, so some flexibility to the standards, and they, they wanna reduce that number of parking from 60 to 37. So if you recall, when this concept plan was presented to the city council earlier this year, the developer was only proposing 25 spaces, so city staff has been working with the developer to increase that number, so they went from 25 to 37. And the developer also provided a, a detailed parking study, a parking analysis to justify their request. Staff is amenable to this deviation, given that drop-offs and pickup times are relatively limited, and employee parking will be somewhat staggered. So here's a look at the, the building, exterior facades. The developer is requesting a second deviation, or PUD amendment, for, from the exterior building materials that are required. So according to the zoning code, commercial buildings must be, they must consist of at least 70% Class 1 materials, so such as brick, stone, and glass. And the developer is proposing that the east elevation, which would, the most visible facade, fronting Helmo Avenue, that would actually exceed the ordinance required by, or ordinance requirement by having 72% Class 1 materials, so mostly brick. However, the, the north, south, and west facades would consist of what we, what we call Class 2 materials. This is fiber cement, exterior insulation finishing system, or EFIS for short. And given that those, the north, south, and west facades have limited visibility, and that the alternative materials would mimic that of cut stone, staff is amenable to this deviation request. There is one final deviation that the applicant is requesting, and that is to allow alternative fencing materials. So in the original PUD agreement, there is a provision that fencing must be wrought iron, and which, that just does not appear appropriate for a daycare setting, so staff is also amenable to that change. The Planning Commission held the required public hearing earlier this month, November 2nd, and recommended approval of this request, and staff is recommending approval of this request, subject to the ordinance that's in the packet, and also the conditions of the resolution for the site plan, and I'll just briefly summarize those. So, and there are eight of them. Number one is approval of an amendment to the PUD to allow deviations that I had mentioned. Number two, execution of a development agreement between the developer and city. Number three, permits and approvals obtained through the Watershed District. Number four, approval of the site, site civil construction plans by the city engineer. Number five, approvals from the fire department, fire department for the hydrant and fire department connection locations. Number six, the developer provide an updated photometric plan that complies with the ordinance. Number seven, execution of an easement agreement for the shared access between this and the, the site to the north. And number seven, the developer provide an updated site plan that shows all proposed rooftop and ground mechanical equipment and required screening, in compliance with the code. As I mentioned, the Planning Commission held the public hearing in early November, but the developer is here if you have any questions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Councilmembers, any questions for Luke?
Yeah.
Councilmember Morecambe.
So you said the traffic study was done as a part of this project, and I know typically childcare centers have drop-ups before school starts and after school is done, but I know there's close proximity to Eagle Point Elementary, just a few blocks away, with considerable congestion already. So was that considered as part of the traffic study? The congestion for Eagle Point and the proximity for where the traffic for the childcare center would be?
Yep, so, and maybe the developer could, could touch, touch on that a little bit, but no, the, the traffic analysis, or the parking analysis that the developer provided, it didn't account for the, kind of that interplay between the other schools that are nearby. And, and their analysis was more so focused on similar daycares that they have elsewhere in Minnesota, comparable, comparable examples.
Sure, and if the developer could speak to it real quick, I know that there's a number of residents that know about traffic congestion at Eagle Point Elementary, so if you can speak to what you've seen in Minneapolis and other sites.
Yeah, absolutely. So what, what we...
Kristen, name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come on, you know the rules here.
It's been a long time. Kristen Denzer, 915 Inspiration Parkway, Bayport, Minnesota. The, so our sites across Minnesota have a variety of different parking situations. Some as few as eight parking spaces, some, you know, in more like a strip mall setting where there's a vast number of them. And so what the traffic study demonstrates is the requirement of parking, how many vehicles are actually required, and the time of, the time, like the length and duration of drop-off. And what that shows is that this site has far beyond the parking needs. There isn't any parking need beyond the site, so there wouldn't be people parking, you know, in the blocks close to the school, impacting the traffic there.
Perfect. So yeah, also, if you could speak real quick to the common pickup and drop-offs for people who use your services?
Yeah. Yeah, so for drop-off and pickup, parents at our center, they park. We, they don't stop in front of the school because they're very young kids. They're required to bring their child to the classroom, and then they leave. And so I think the study found the average time was a couple minutes. I don't recall the exact number of seconds, but it showed the length of time, and that was about the, the average. And so it was very, very brief. We've seen this. We had a fair amount of parking concerns with one of our centers in particular, that has almost 300 children, and only has, I think, six parking spaces, and is on a busy, busy street. And what residents found once we opened is that the time at which parents are actually on site is very fast. In the morning, I mean, they're getting to work. In the afternoon, they, they wanna get their kids home and have dinners, it's late. And so it's very, very brief. The most busiest time of drop-off and pickup typically is that 7:30 to 8:00 AM time, and then in the afternoon, it's that 4:00 to 4:45 time period. But it is open until 5:30.
Perfect. So yeah, what I'm hearing is it's outside the time typically where the largest backups for the local elementary, and also you've added extra spots to accommodate, you've done traffic studies. I just wanted to make sure there was consideration for that portion of it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Morecambe, as a follow-up to that, maybe for Luke, could you talk a little bit about the distinction between a project-specific parking study and a more neighborhood-wide or regional traffic study? I know one's not always required with the other. In this case, you know, the city council requested a parking study. I assume we didn't ask for a, a larger traffic study just because of the size of the project. I know we have done that with larger projects in the past, but it is, I mean, in, in your world in community development, they are looking at different things, correct?
That's correct, Mayor. And the, the parking really is dialed into just this site, and, you know, spill-over effects that it might have on the immediate properties, and in particular, Helmo Avenue, we don't wanna, we wanna make sure that, that is not being congested or blocked off. But it, it would be maybe a bit onerous to expand out and, and have a full-blown neighborhood analysis, parking, parking study, and traffic, counts, if you will.
Thank you, Luke. Councilmembers, what other questions do we have? Anything? Alrighty, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 913, approving an amendment to the North Star Mini Storage Planned Unit Development.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that PUD amendment and site plan are approved. One more action on this item. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2023-113, approving the site plan for Marley's Early Education Center, with conditions included in the attached resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the site plan is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, another one from community development. Mr. Getzlove is back, Job Creation Fund Program.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. Back again, as alluded to before, there's a second part to this action for PACE Analytical. They have a second application, the deed, for the Job Creation Fund. This application is for $500,000. A resolution of support is required from, from the city for this application. A public hearing is not, is not required for the application. One distinction between this one and the MIF loan, this one, our role as a city is much less involved. For the MIF loan, we're actually, we're a conduit, deed provides us the money, then we have a sub-recipient grant to PACE to provide them the money. In this case, it's simply passing the resolution of support for the application. And if, and if they are awarded, then deed would provide the funding directly, directly to the business in that case. As part of the recommendation, we are, cities required to pass findings of fact. And I will briefly summarize what those four findings are. Finding one, the project is in the public interest and encourages growth of commercial and commerce and industry, prevent the movement of current or future operations to locations outside Minnesota, result in increased employment in Minnesota, create new high-wage, full-time jobs, preserve or enhance the state-local tax base through an estimated $893,000 in real property improvements. Finding two, that the project proposed would not be reasonably expected to occur solely through private investment within reasonable foreseeable future. Finding three, that the project conforms to the general plan for development or redevelopment of the city as a whole. And finding four, that the proposed projects afford its maximum opportunity, consistent with the solid needs of the city as a whole for the development of the project by private enterprise. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we'll note again that Baker Tilly is here in the audience as well as the applicant.
Excellent, thank you, Andy. Council members, any questions for Mr. Getzlove? How about Baker Tilly? How about the applicant? All right, we're good. I'll look for motion.
I'd like to make a motion, waive reading and adopt Resolution 2023-119, supporting a Job Creation Fund application in connection with PACE Analytical Life Sciences LLC.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion of the second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is approved. Thank you. Next up, please, Chief Newton, come on down. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'll be here to discuss a tobacco sales license request made by A&amp;M Trading, business name of Super Smokedale, located at 7141 10th Street. The applicant, Mr. Ibrahim Akell, is here in the audience with us tonight. In October of 2018, the city council denied a tobacco license to the then-owner, Hatim Yunus, through a city council resolution. Also, in October of 2018, city council denied a tobacco license to Hatim Yunus's business partner, Mr. Ibrahim Akell, through a separate city resolution. Since 2018, Super Smokedale has operated without a tobacco sales license. In July of this year, Mr. Akell applied for a license for Super Smokedale. Mr. Akell noted that Hatim Yunus was no longer affiliated with ownership or operations of the business, and he had a new business partner. The police department conducted a background investigation on the applicant and the new business partner. It revealed no criminal history information. As part of the background investigation, the police department contacted other cities where Ibrahim Akell owns or operates businesses. The cities of Big Lake, Hastings, and Maplewood all reported no concerns with those businesses. However, Prior Lake reported five incidents to note, and I'll briefly highlight those. In December of 2021, Prior Lake Police conducted a tobacco compliance check in which the business failed and made a sale to a person under the age of 21. In March of 2022, a tobacco compliance check was conducted again in the business past. In November of 2022, Prior Lake Police Department sent Ibrahim Akell's business a letter regarding a sale of THC products without a license in violation of their city ordinance. In December of 2022, tobacco compliance check was conducted, and the business failed with the sale of tobacco to a person under the age of 21. And lastly, in January of 2023, during a compliance check, Prior Lake found that the business was selling THC product without a license in violation of the city ordinance. That information was forwarded to Prior Lake City Administration for consideration. Mayor, the police department is not making a recommendation, rather, we are recommending that the city council consider all of this information provided and decide on this matter. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Council members, any questions for Chief Newton?
I have a question for Jim. We tabled this item, do we need a motion to take from the table before we act on it? Or how do we, how do you want us to handle this?
No, Mr. Mayor, you don't need to, because it was tabled to tonight, to a specific date, so you don't need to.
That works, thanks, Jim. Council members, one last check for questions for Chief Newton. All right, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion denying the issuance of a tobacco sales license for the current term to expire on December 31st, 2023, to A&amp;M Trading LLC, doing business as Super Smokedale, at 7141 10th Street North, and direct staff to prepare a finding of fact memorandum for council consideration on December 12th, 2023. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion of the second, final comments.
Mr. Mayor, just so, just so it's clear, the motion was to actually deny, it was just to send back the staff to come back with a resolution for denial.
Deny.
Deny. And I assume it's based on the information contained in the police report, including the information that the police chief summarized with respect to the Prior Lake incidents.
Correct, but we are also asking staff to prepare findings of fact with that information included, that'll be accepted publicly on December 12th.
Okay, thank you.
There's a motion of the second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion to deny the issuance of a tobacco license is approved. Next up, let's check in with our city attorney, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, nothing specific to report, but happy to answer questions.
Anybody have questions for Jim? All right, let's turn to our right, check in with city administrator Volkers.
Mr. Mayor, city council, I don't have anything to report.
All right, anybody have questions for Chris? All right, council presentations, anybody want to go first?
Sure, I have nothing.
All right.
You guys laugh every time I say it.
I know, and I can go real quick, and just because there's so much development going on in the city right now, I just want to encourage residents, you can reach out to the city, you can reach out to us as elected officials, but the city does have a really nice development website with a tracker, where you can get updates on everything that's going on. You don't always have to email an elected official when you see a chain-link fence to ask what the heck's going up over there, although it is fun to answer those questions. So just encourage people, as we do more development, as there's more changes going on, use the resources that you have and check out the website, it's a really good place to go.
Thanks, Andy.
Yep, that's my pitch.
Council members, Willenbringer, her, anything?
Nothing for me.
No?
Nothing for me.
All right, I have a few. First, a very exciting update. So on yesterday, Monday, we had a ceremonial ribbon cutting for the new, I'm going to call it the Helmo Beelenberg Bridge. I know it ticks off our neighbors in Woodbury, but that's what I'm calling it. This is a long-anticipated bridge that's providing a valuable second connection over I-94 between Oakdale and Woodbury, something that this community has wanted and needed for a very, very long time. It's as part, or it's part of the Gold Line BRT project, and will help improve traffic flow, especially easing some of the congestion at radio driving Inward Avenue. We expect it to open to the public, even though we cut the ribbon, we expect it to open to the public later this week. It's kind of dependent on the weather. The crews haven't been able to put the road striping down because it's been so cold. So as soon as they can, as soon as it warms up, they will get that down and it'll be open to the public. And as soon as, I think it's the county, right, they're doing it, they will let us know, and we will put it on social media, so keep an eye out there. But this, this is a very important project for our community, for Woodbury. It's tremendous, the bridge is enormous. It's tremendous that it's going to accommodate vehicles, buses in dedicated lanes, pedestrian, bikes, everything, all in one bridge. They really did it right, and it's a very positive thing for our community moving forward. So we're excited to have that open. Next up, we have the deadline for submitting photos for the fall photo contest this Thursday, November 30th. This contest is open to all Oakdale residents, and images must be taken in the city of Oakdale. More information and how to submit your photos can be found on the city website, oakdalemn.gov. We have the Oakdale Indoor Market Saturday, December 9th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Discovery Center, so mark your calendars. Great opportunity to search for some special gifts, holiday treats, or holiday items or treats. I was out there a couple weeks ago, place was packed with vendors and packed with shoppers, which was great to see. I've got some really cool pottery stuff, so my Christmas shopping is almost done. So lots of great stuff for people to choose from, a lot of local vendors, which is really cool to see as well. A big congratulations to Carol Mathews Center for Children and Families. They announced on social media today that they are a recipient of a $50,000 Good Neighbor Grant from Ascendium. They have been in this community, educating young learners for 50 years, over 50 years. So congratulations to them, you know, for nonprofits like that, that is a huge amount of money, and they do tremendous work in this community, so congratulations to Carol Mathews. Finally, our annual truth and taxation meeting will be held two weeks, in two weeks, on Tuesday, December 12th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers at city hall. At this meeting, our finance director will make a presentation about the proposed 2024 City of Oakdale budget. The public is invited to attend in person or watch live online on YouTube to learn about the budget in advance of the truth and taxation meeting. You can go to our city website, use our OpenGov tool. This provides 24/7 access to our city's finances, it's a great tool for transparency. You can see everything that's being proposed, what's going to be added in our community, and how we're going to pay the bills. So that's always a great resource available to our residents. You can go to oakdalemn.gov and that is available, or just come join us on December 12th here in council chambers. I want to add one, we took action on earlier, but I forgot to call it out at that moment. We have a new finance director in this city. I mentioned him under the truth and taxation, but I want, on behalf of the council, I want to send a big congratulations to Kyle Staska, going from our accounting manager to finance director, a very well-deserved promotion within city hall here. He has been doing incredible work for, what, three, two years now, three years now?
There'll be two years.
Yeah, since we poached him from our neighbor. But congratulations, Kyle, we know you're going to do tremendous work with our city's finances. That's it, that's all I got. Let's pay some bills. We have a claims roster in front of us, November 15th through November 20th, 1.1 million and change. Council members, were there any questions on the claims? Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve claims as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion of the second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the bills are paid, can I have a motion to adjourn? There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion of the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.